When should I get on?
We're on item two right now, hearing on para-transit service grant funding.
Oh, my apology. When are you going to do number one?
Number one has been continued until December 12th, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah, number one is continued.
Thank you supervisor.
Okay.
Thank you supervisor.
Or General Pampa comment. Okay, next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Okay, so it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item two is before us now, colleagues. Moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item two is before you Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, let's move on to item four. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title for item four.
Item four is a hearing on the appeal of project number 2017-003465-3 to authorize the construction of a 2,241 square foot single-family residence on a .5 acre parcel located at 661 Cold Canyon Road within the Montanito Rural Village in the unincorporated community of the Santa Monica Mountains Coastal Zone, applied by Steven Montoya. No departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
Okay, I see that Amy Bodak, our Director of Regional Planning, is with us this morning. Ms. Bodak, did you want to make a presentation?
I would, Madam Chair, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, I wanted to give you a brief update on this project because this is not the first time this project has come to your board. This project actually dates back to a public hearing that was held in May of 2020 at the hearing officer. This project was then appealed to the Regional Planning Commission, and then it came to your board in January of 2023. At that time, there were some issues that were raised that were not known to staff at the time, and they were related to some archaeological issues that were alleged to be on-site. That was a serious issue to the board and both to staff, and so the board remanded the issue back to staff for us to look at it. You actually continued the hearing and had us come back. So since that time, this is a single-family home in an existing developed neighborhood. We did hire, not we, the applicant hired an archaeological consultant who is certified to do these types of investigations. They completed their archaeological review and determined that there were no archaeological artifacts of concern on the property. As such, we are now here today to ask you to hold the hearing and deny the appeal and allow this project to proceed. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, I see Supervisor Horvath on the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Amy, for your presentation. Is it standard that the applicant would pay for the consultant who does the archaeological study? Is that how it's typically done?
Yes, it is. The consultant pays for it, and then it is submitted to us, and then we actually review it. And then if we have questions, we work directly with the consultant to modify or finalize that report as necessary.
Okay, so that's our standard process. I want to thank you for reviewing that report because that was a concern of mine earlier this year that we weren't doing things sort of in the right order. I think we acknowledged at the beginning of a meeting the land acknowledgement and the importance of land, and then we were going to kind of skip what I think was an important step. So I'm glad we took the time to do that, that your staff has reviewed that report. You know, I'm sensitive to the concerns of the Santa Monica Mountains region and especially the impacts of development in this particular area. We know that this area is unique and has sensitive biological habitat for our region with great biodiversity, and so we want to make sure that that is protected. We have a local coastal plan that focuses on that protection, which has been approved by the Coastal Commission and sets boundaries for development in this area. And we know that your team works very hard to enforce that local coastal plan and to ensure that we are considering all the potential impacts. I know that the last time we spoke, you talked about visibility of this project. And so I just wanted to reiterate here, is from your study, can any aspect of this project be seen from the scenic resource area?
So you are correct that this is in the coastal zone, and that's why part of their application requires a minor coastal development permit for the construction of a single-family home. In this case, because it is in the coastal zone, we did require the erection of story poles, and those are poles that you put up with a little ribbon or on top so that you can see how tall this building is going to be and whether there are going to be visual impacts. There is a scenic route that is identified, but it's about a mile away. It's Payuma. And so what we did in response to the concerns that this would be an impact to scenic trails and scenic views is in June of this year, we actually had staff go out and drive up and down around the whole neighborhood while the story poles were up to make sure that there was no visibility from the scenic route. Additionally, staff hiked about a mile of the backbone trail that goes around that neighborhood as well and still could find no evidence that they could see the story poles. So we are confident that the visual impacts are not as alleged, and we could not find any evidence of visual impacts.
Thank you for that. I know that the enforcement of the local coastal plan is very important, not only to me, but especially to the folks who live in this neighborhood and who would be impacted. And I know that this proposed project is a single-family home that is in a community that is already developed. So this single infill home is really what we're talking about here today, and you have studied with your team to ensure that the local coastal plan has been enforced in terms of this proposed development. So I'm inclined to, at this time, deny the appeal and approve the Planning Commission's recommendations based on the findings of your team and what we've seen in the report here today, and to approve the minor CDP. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other Supervisors have any questions? If not, I will now call on the appellant and the applicant separately. And we will first call on the appellant, Alicia Gonzalez, who will be given a total of two minutes. Ms. Gonzalez, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Alicia Gonzalez. I'm President of the Montanito Valley Community Association, and I'm here today to represent our rural village of approximately 400 homes in the center of the Santa Monica Mountains. Location is critically important when conducting a Phase One archaeological study. The report that was submitted to you and just recently made available to us confuses the location of the parcel that is slated for development in our community. The author indicates that Montanito is in the city of Malibu repeatedly. It is a flawed and seemingly cursory document. It is also highly editorialized. We request that you continue the hearing on this project until an accurate report can be prepared. Location is the main issue with this project. Time and again, I am in disbelief that we, the community, the developer, and the planners are referring to the same property. The design for this single-family residence would be found somewhere else, including somewhere else in Montanito, but not where it is located. I cannot impress upon you enough the unique and challenging topography of this parcel. It is a knob that singularly stands out above all the surrounding landscape. Because of its elevation, it is visible from the backbone trail, and a two-story home there will tower over the neighboring residences. Because of its geology, an ancient volcanic plug, it has proven difficult, including 20 years of attempts by the previous owners, a local family, to find a location for an on-site wastewater treatment system that can percolate. We believe at a minimum, the CDP should be amended to address the impact of structure height and the viability of a septic system. We oppose the project as presented and ask that you support our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand we have the applicant here, Steven Montoya. You will also be given a total of two minutes to speak. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Russell Hamerle.
Oh, is that?
Oh, he's here.
I'm sorry, we are looking for the applicant, Steven Montoya.
Hi there, I'm here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Steven Montoya, and I'm the applicant representative for the property located at 661 Cold Canyon.
Wait, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Get a little bit closer to the mic. Pull it down.
About that, is that better?
There, much better.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay, wait, start his time over again.
Will we start the clock?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, go.
Good morning. My name is Steven Montoya. I'm the applicant and representative for the property at 661 Cold Canyon. There are some documents that you may have received in your packet, more specifically a correspondence from the Stevenson family stating that the proprietor is building on this lot for resale. I would like to reiterate this cannot be further from the truth. Ms. Shamam, the owner of the property and her husband, plan to build and retire in this area. They want to be part of the community and enjoy the serene environment just like many other Montanito neighbors. I realize I only have two minutes, so I'm going to be quick. I have a six-point bullet list. Just want to reiterate that there's multiple county and department approvals and/or clearances that were issued for this project, more specifically the Forest Department, Department of Public Health, Septic System, Public Works, and Forestry Division. Please note that the tank, the seepage pits, associated piping are all outside the protected zones of the existing oak trees. Again, Department of Public Health provided a preliminary approval of the project and found it incomplete, and therefore may proceed in the permit process. Existing development adjacent to and surrounding the property is clustered with overlapping fuel modification zones. The proposed location of the house was chosen to best fit this model. The entire property and fuel modification or brush cleaning for the residents will extend into existing fuel-modified areas as there are several properties that are directly adjacent to the east, the west, as well as to the north and the south. Bullet point three, the project is commensurate with regards to the neighborhood as it relates to size, bulk, square footage, and number of stories. And I defer you to refer to the staff report where Tyler Montgomery did a pretty comprehensive study in terms of that. I just want to lastly talk about the hearing back in January where it was concluded that we had to do a Phase One, which we did, and we're in agreement with Dr. Lewis's findings and his recommendations. And to, you know, if there's any cultural resources are accounted during construction, a qualified archaeologist would be required.
Thank you.
Required.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Executive Officer, now call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, item four.
Will the following individuals please come forward and staff will assist you? Eric Shamam, Joanne Slimskowski, and Roger Polieski. Please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderating, when we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is Kim Lamore. You may begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Kim Lamore, and I'm President of the Los Verdes Homeowners Federation. Honorable Supervisors, on behalf of the Santa Monica Mountains stakeholders, we support Montanito's appeal and the request to continue this item with ad conditions. We respectfully ask you to send a boss-directed so-called study back to the applicant to produce an accurate archaeological assessment. The fact is, and we disagree with regional planning on this, it is incomplete, information mangled and interjected overriding all else, not once but twice, with personal opinions, accusatory and inflammatory, about a community member based on hearsay. The archaeologists' feelings, conjecture, and more, nothing to do with archaeology. Further, it is laced, and most importantly, with inconsistencies, with five pages of projects and zoning ordinances in the city of Malibu, which has nothing to do with this report. This is Montanito in unincorporated county adjacent to the city of Calabasas. The area is rife with rich cultural resources, and there are large bedrock motors in the vicinity. The project site is located in a tribal cultural resource area in the key...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
...and eastern territory.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Horvath for asking the very good question. Is it standard that the applicants would pay for their own architectural study? Well, that's a great question because, you know, you get what you pay for is kind of what many of us out in the real world think of. So how does that work? Well, that works because the prior administration led by Zevia Rislowski and others don't want to pay for anything themselves lest it dent the budget, so jack up the price of the applicants all over the place. But here, I think it's important to bring up the conflict. It is a little conflicty, but we accept it. It's like people pay for their own EIR. Very unfortunate. But imagine if on the, Bodak is doing a great job, by the way, Amy, thank you for all your service. Imagine if she had worked for or gone to school at the property. That's what's happening at City of LA at Harvard Westlake where Samantha Millman and Caroline Coe are graduates of the school. They were put on the Planning Commission of the city by Eric Garcetti, a graduate of the school. Will anybody stand up to these billionaires up on the hill?
Thank you.
Supervisor Horvath?
Thank you, thank you.
I know.
Thank you, thank you.
It's not easy.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
And thank you for staying on subject.
Your time has expired. Next speaker, are we going in person? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Joan Slimakowski. The small lots of Montanito were carved up and built on as early as the 1920s. The property and project before you is one of these lots. Logically, it should have been built on by now, except for one fact. It's not a buildable lot. There's plenty of lots that fall into this category, and I would urge you to support that are appealed and help us set an example that despite what developers think and wish, and press county planners to approve, conditions were approved on this, but they will be very hard to enforce. Please support us. Help set an example once and for all that there are such things as non-developable lots in Montanito.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Roger Poliesi. I'm the Vice President of the Los Verdes Homeowners Federation and the Chair of the Topanga Association for a Scenic Community. Rather than to belabor the point some more, I refer you to the five-page document that was submitted for evidence in reference to supporting the appeal. I think that it seems to me the big bone of contention here happens to be the archaeological survey that was done. It's inadequate, number one. Number two, it was addressed to Malibu as opposed to the Santa Monica Mountains. And I would request that both organizations would request that you support the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath, you're on the queue now. Did you want to say something or you want to wait? Okay, next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Iri Shamam. My husband and I are the owners of 661 Cold Canyon. We purchased this in 2017 with the purpose to build our home. We love the environment. We love nature. We're not a developers. I'm a nurse, and my husband is a retired mechanic. We've been through many, many stages, and we respectfully request that you approve the coastal permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers either here or on the queue?
No other speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Horvath, did you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Director Bodak, I wanted to address the contention that was raised in public comment regarding the report indicating the city of Malibu. I want to make sure that it sounded like your staff reviewed this report.
Correct.
So can you tell me what the implications are of how it is addressed, making sure that we are looking at the right parcel?
Certainly.
That we have considered what has been indicated as it relates to the report indicating the city of Malibu versus where we know this is in Montanito.
Right. So many of the parcels in unincorporated Santa Monica Mountains are referred to as Malibu or have a Malibu postal address. So there are sometimes confusion when they are truly in the unincorporated area, when they actually have a Malibu postal address. There are also Malibu guidelines, particularly in the coastal zone, that we also do look at just to make sure that we're consistent with our own guidelines, particularly those properties that are on the edge of the city of Malibu proper. More importantly, regardless of the fact that Malibu is mentioned in the report, cultural resources that have been identified have an identifying number that is assigned to them. And there is a whole resource center at Cal State Fullerton where all archaeologists in the state go to to see if there is any prior studies related to that artifact. And so in this instance, there is absolutely no confusion that the artifact that was raised in January is artifact LAN-506. And that is the artifact that was analyzed in this report. That is the artifact that remains. Records of those artifacts is in Cal State Fullerton, and that is the research that was done. So regardless of whether someone inadvertently wrote the city of Malibu or unincorporated Los Angeles, the study is about that specific artifact. The artifact was identified as not being on this site. The report that from the consultant expressed grave concerns that members of the public were to know about the potential location of the artifact, because if it is a cultural artifact, members of the public are not supposed to know that. Only qualified archaeologists and other qualified individuals are supposed to have access to that information. So we don't know exactly where that artifact is, but we know that it is not on the site, and it's about 800 to 1,000 feet away. We don't know what direction that artifact is in, but we do know based on the report that it is not on the boundaries of this property.
Okay, so going forward, I can appreciate that when you live in this community, if you read a report that misidentifies
Yes.
the neighborhood in which you live, especially this neighborhood because everybody knows everybody.
Yes.
And everybody knows every inch of this neighborhood, that we establish practices that up the bar in terms of how our reports are coming forward, that we are more precise in our language. I'm hearing that your team has reviewed it, but I think going forward, we should, through our planning department, make sure that
Yes.
these reports accurately reflect exactly, precisely, especially because we have to be precise to the foot, to the, you know, to the T.
Yes.
To the letter of the law. We need to make sure going forward that that sort of discrepancy doesn't happen.
Correct.
I'm clear that you're saying that your team has reviewed this report, so there isn't a legal issue
Right.
or any confusion as to the analysis that was done for this particular site. So I remain committed to denying the appeal and moving forward. But I do think that as a department, we need to up the game in terms of the reports we have moving forward.
Understood, agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. So colleagues, item four is now before us. Moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item four is before you, which denies the appeal and upholds the Regional Planning Commission approval of the project, is before you Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, let's move on to item five. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item, item five. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item five is a hearing on the appeal of project number 2019-000686-3 to authorize the construction of a 15-single-family residence on a 16-lot located at the 2,5600 and 2,5700 block of Puma Road within the Montanito Rural Village in the unincorporated community of the Santa Monica Mountains Coastal Zone, applied for by the California Pacific Homes. No departmental statement was submitted, and correspondence was received.
And we have Ms. Bodak still here, Director of Regional Planning, and I believe you will make a presentation on this item as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, I am here again. This is related to another project in the Montanito neighborhood. This one is on Payuma Road. It consists of 15 lots that were graded under a legitimate grading permit prior to the enactment of our coastal, our local coastal plan. So I want to set the stage for this. This project has been around for quite a while. As I just said, there were some 15 legally graded lots that were created prior to the adoption of our coastal plan, and this has gone through many fits and starts. The most recent attempt has been starting in 2018, where I also got involved in trying to move this project forward in a collaborative way with the applicant. The applicant is proposing these 15 houses in some very challenging and topographic and environmentally sensitive areas on Payuma Road. There are challenges with each of the individual sites, and we worked very closely with the applicant to attempt to find a way for each of those individual parcels to comply with the coastal plan. The coastal plan requires that you cite a home not within the most sensitive habitat within the coastal plan, which is H1 habitat. The coastal plan also sets forth a H1 habitat buffer. The coastal plan also sets forth buffers for impacts to oak trees, as well as buffers from any other existing state or national parkland. Also, it sets forth buffers against any streams, as well as street frontage requirements. Within all of these contexts, we believe that there is an opportunity to construct individual homes on each of those 15 lots that would actually comply with all of the requirements of the coastal plan. The project as submitted includes 15 individual coastal development permits for each of the individual homes, and would have required 12 variances, which in general, we do not support variances within the county of Los Angeles. Some of the variances likely could have been supported because they were related to street frontages, and because of the sensitive habitat, it would have been impossible for us to retain the habitat if we did not grant those variances. So in our discussions with the developer, we were absolutely willing to consider the ability to make findings for variances if they were for the protection of the environmental, the sensitive species that we were talking about. However, a couple of years ago, we came to a stalemate with the applicant, and the applicant has chosen not to make any additional changes to the plan, and therefore we cannot find any one of these homes consistent with the coastal plan. We suggested to the applicant that we would be proceeding with a denial of the project if they did not make additional changes, and they chose not to make additional changes. So we went through the public hearing process to deny their project, starting at the hearing officer, following up with the Regional Planning Commission, who also supported the staff position. And now we are here on an appeal by the applicant as to whether or not these homes should continue. It is staff's contention, and County Council was involved in many meetings, and I was personally involved in many of these design meetings. It is our contention that there remains economic use for these parcels individually if they were to redesign their project to be consistent with the coastal plan. So therefore, we do ask that you deny the appeal and approve the recommendation of the Regional Planning Commission. the Regional Planning Commission to deny this project. I am available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to staff once again for your work on this project. As I indicated on the last conversation, the Santa Monica Mountains are a very unique and precious part of our county. They feature some of our most sensitive biological habitat in the region, and they face serious risk from wildfire, which is why the terms of the local coastal plan are so critically important. This plan was approved by the Coastal Commission. It sets boundaries for development, and in this case, planning staff, including our director, held numerous meetings directly with the developer from all the way back to 2019. Staff provided specific recommendations, as you heard in Director Bodak's presentation here today, recommendations of changes that the appellant could make to their development plans to still have a viable project that respected our local coastal plan. And the developer, in this case, chose to ignore the guidance of the planning department, which disrespects our rules and our processes. And I just want to restate for the record, I've never seen this number of variances requested. It was more than 10, I believe, right? Can you tell me the number of variances? And is this typical for developments that you have seen come to the county?
So the county in general does not support variances because the findings to make those variances are extremely high. In this case, it was asking for 12 variances. Most of them were related to street frontage requirements, where only a certain percentage of the home could be viewed within the linear footage of your street frontage. Some of these lots are very narrow, and so the width of the home would have required noncompliance with the street frontage. However, there are ways to reduce that street frontage requirement, I should say, impact, not requirement, including a reduction in the square footage of the homes. We were, again, as I said, willing to consider some of those variances because the higher standard of protecting H1 habitat is more valuable to the county than it is to get every single street frontage requirement met. So it was a balancing act that we were attempting to make as a concession to allowing the development to proceed in certain lots, but I can guarantee that there was, we would not be able to make the finding for all 12 variances that they requested.
And what I heard you say earlier is, even though you just said that the county typically doesn't accept any variances, you were still willing to work with this developer on some of the variances that were proposed, but as you also stated, 12 variances were requested in this proposal, which is not typical. And I think in an area that has this very carefully laid out local coastal plan, we have to make sure that we are following the terms, especially because of the fire-prone neighborhoods in this area, the biologically sensitive resources. So I am inclined to agree with your position and ensure that we are rejecting the appeal and concur with the Planning Commission's decision to reject this project, though I will hear from the public as well on this item.
Thank you. Okay, we will now first hear from the applicant and then the appellant. Is the applicant and the appellant are the same person? I see that. Michael Schonfeld, you'll be given still just a total of two minutes, even though he's both. Okay, two minutes.
Chair Hahn, members of the board, two minutes is really not enough time to make some points that are necessary for the record, but I did want to reference our letter of yesterday, which went to each of you. It stated September 18th, 2023. I also wanted to speak to some of the comments made by the planning director and Supervisor Horvath. There's been a theme that's been developed through these hearings, that somehow we didn't do our homework, that we were quote-unquote disrespectful. That's not my word. That's not the case. The fact is, we had been working very hard with staff. We do appreciate Amy Bodak and her work and County Council. Everyone was at these meetings. We came to a screeching halt on these meetings when it became clear that you can't build anything on these lots, not one thing. These are residential lots. They're in an RC zone, but you can't put a house on them. It doesn't matter how small they are or how small your street frontage is. You just can't build on them. Why? Because each structure requires a 200-foot feel mod radius, and 200 feet reaches into H1, no matter how small your building is. You could build a broom closet, and you've got a 200-foot feel modification radius. It's going to touch H1. Long story short, this is probably the only instance of our awareness of a Coastal Commission-approved subdivision that predates the LCP, but the LCP takes this property away. We can't build on it. It turns residential lots into a public park, that's the effect, to protect H1, and we want to protect H1, but these were residential lots that were duly approved by the Coastal Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Long time ago, yes, but they are residential lots in a residential zone. You can't build on them, and that, we all came to that conclusion before the ERB hearing. Going into the hearing officer, it became an issue, a theme that somehow we didn't do our homework. That's incorrect. I have to make that point for the record, and my time's already up.
Mr. Schonfeld, I feel like since you're the applicant and the appellant, I'm willing to give you another two minutes, just to make sure you feel like this is a fair hearing for you.
Thank you, Chair Hahn. I appreciate that very much. So I do appreciate the time that we spent with staff. We do appreciate the time to present a project that tried to hew as closely to the LCP as possible. We did lots of sidewalks. LA County Fire Department was out there, and there was this initial understanding that we could avoid H1 and not have to do feel mod in H1. That gave us hope that we could design a project. Now, H1, again, is in the 200-foot radius of anything you build on any of these 16 lots. But if we could avoid thinning in H1, we could conceivably work with staff, and that's the assumption that we went forward with. We found out in the wake, or right at the heels of the ERB hearing, that the LA County Fire Department would not allow us to avoid thinning in H1, and that came, that was the end of this project. It would be a futile endeavor to go back and redesign anything that was smaller after that. It takes a lot of money and a lot of time to put a, you know, site plan together, and a lot of money was spent on this project. 12 variances were necessary, not because we're asking for the moon, but because of all of the buffers that we were encountering on each of these lots. We presented a project to this Board of Supervisors before the LCP. Okay, so we've been trying at this before the LCP even existed. We came into the LCP, the LCP takes our property. This is private property, these are private lots, you can't build on them. That's just the end of the story. It's very simple. It's become very complex through the various staff reports up to date, but it's a very simple issue. We're sorry that that's the case, and again, we're appreciative of staff, but this is what we're faced with. I appreciate your time. I thank you for the extra time, and we're here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schonfeld. I believe it's now, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item, item five.
Will the following individuals please come forward? Alicia Gonzalez, Brent Allen, Carrie Baltin, Doug Rosen, Joanne Sinusowski, Lisa Leslie Keith, Patrick Sherman, Roger Plugezki, Russ Hammerl, Sally Livingston, and Tina Payne, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Paul Edelman. You may begin.
I'm Paul Edelman. I'm the Deputy Director of Natural Resources and Planning for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Conservancy supports the staff recommendation fully to deny the appeal. Unlike what the applicant said, this is not a black and white issue. This is a super-sensitive site that demands super-sensitive design, and the applicant clearly failed to work with that and to provide that level of design. Thank you. We support, fully support the appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Gary Bardovi. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. I did submit a letter, and I'm not going to go into the detail because I think it's been adequately covered so far. It has to do with the sheer number and extent of the variances, but I do want to point out that the applicant acquired this land in 2011, well in advance of the eventual adoption of the LCP in October of 2014. So any challenges of compliance with the requirements of the LCP is a self-imposed one, and not, as the applicant would have you believe, the result of the misapplication of the LCP's provisions. So I, again, implore you to support the denial of the appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Kim Lamori. You may begin.
Honorable Supervisors, Kim Lamori, President of the Las Berrin Homeowners Federation, we concur with regional planning and respectfully ask you to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission denial. In 55 years, we've witnessed development proposals that flaunt the regulations, but this housing tract's excess is in a category all its own. It is inconsistent with the LCP, oversized and exceeding 15 mega mansions, 12 variance requests for 12 of the residences, but in six different categories, with a whopping 148,000 square feet of building site area, smack dab in the heart of our most sensitive and pristine coastal habitat areas, and on a winding picturesque county-designated scenic route, Payuma. Moreover, the applicant is utilizing an old entitlement. New subdivisions have been prohibited since 2014 because of the cumulative negative impacts. Claims to the contrary, they can build, but they don't want to build within the parameters of what the-
Thank you. Thank you, your time has expired.
Every other-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item five, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero now to be placed in the speaker queue. Moderator, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Genevieve Clavirio. You may begin.
Yes, good morning. I am always concerned about those issues. It seems that sometimes they are over restrictive, and I think maybe we need to look at some of those areas. And to penalize people because it's 12 or whatever, let's focus on the number. Maybe we should focus on what is really acceptable or not acceptable, and I'm not seeing that in that project, and I am concerned that where we could have some single individual housing built, we cannot do it because of those restrictions. So maybe look at it a little more with open eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn, and what a complicated matter, I have to admit. I mean, this one makes me trepidatious about blowing hard, as I often do, but it seems like the whole county and all the good guys from Santa Monica Conservancy are lining up against this guy who owns property that he can't build on, that was prior to the LCP. It's a bit of a headache, and he is the guy appealing the appeal that was denied. So if you can figure that out, you can go to a very good school in America or even abroad, you could probably get in. Look, we have a serious problem when we give variances, and I think the county's policy about not giving variances was amended with our eyes wide open, and those little devils from County Council were at all those meetings. So maybe there's a way to go into the back room and make a deal, find a way to get some of these things, you know, I don't want to do damage to the environment, but I admit that all of the layering over of regulatory nonsense has put-
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. No backbone deals there.
Thank you, by the way.
Okay, we're going to go in person.
Thank you. Good morning again, honorable Supervisors. Alicia Gonzalez, President of Montanito Valley Community Association. I represent approximately 400 homeowners who are also invested stakeholders in the Santa Monica Mountains. At a time in our nation when established law is being overturned state by state and rights are being eroded piecemeal, it is clear that the Orange County developers, California Pacific Homes, intend to do the same with regard to land use. They do not want to work within the regulations, they want to eliminate them. They dismiss the work and recommendations of the LA County Department of Regional Planning. They are the victims, and the LCP is the villain, and they are on the attack against the local coastal program itself. We urge you to hold fast to the vision and mission of the LCP and continue to implement its policies. We request that you deny the applicant's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carrie Baltin, and for most of my life, I have hiked the Santa Monica Mountains, and for the past 40 years, I have lived in what some call a rural village, some even say a hamlet, and others call this area Montanito. We have and we will continue to oppose any development that does not comply with the LCP. Regional planning has denied these mega mansions because they do not comply with the LCP, and they do not comply with the rural village land use designation. I urge the Board of Supervisors to follow the recommendation to deny this project as regional planning has stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brent Baltin. My spouse and I discovered the area of Montanito when we lived in an apartment in North Hollywood as newlyweds. We're elated that this area was such a close proximity to urban centers and accessible for everyone to enjoy without spending hours in a car. Visitors to this unique area come here to be closer to the rural environment of mountains, streams, oaks, and wildlife. The proposed development of California Pacific Homes will change this environmentally sensitive area per their proposed plan forever. It just doesn't meet the LCP, and for that reason alone should be denied. I do have one question to address to Cal Pacific that I've been curious about. Why do you call your proposed development the Oaks of Montanito, when you're asking permission to encroach on over 100 live oaks? Perhaps an attempt at levity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good morning again, Supervisors. I'm Joan Slonikowski. First and foremost, you've heard all of this again about it's not compliant with the LCP. Many of us have worked decades for the approval and implementation of the LCP, but I want to speak most personally about the Backbone Trail, this iconic resource used by not just those of us called nimby's. I met two different couples this past Saturday hiking, not from Montanito, not even from this state. This is an iconic resource that will be severely impacted, and I thank you and urge you to support the denial of this appeal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Sally Livingston. I am a resident of Montanito for over 18 years and a member of the Board of the Montanito Valley Community Association for 10. During my tenure, I have prioritized helping our residents understand the very grave importance of wildfire preparedness via workshops involving stakeholders, including the LA County Fire Department, our digital and other newsletters, word of mouth. We've worked hard. It seems the idea of installing these noncompliant, oversized-for-the-lot buildings right up against, as Joan said, the Backbone Trail is insane, and I get it that the region needs to develop housing. This is not the answer. So thank you for your service, and thank you for your attention. Please deny this appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Patrick Sherman. I'm the President of the Edenwild Homeowners Association, which is within the Montanito community, and I speak on behalf of the 38 homes in that area. I want to thank the staff for the correct interpretation in denying the 12 variances. We ask that you please uphold these denials. This subdivision is prohibited and violates the Santa Monica Mountains' local coastal plans. The Orange County developers are attempting to knowingly use an old and invalid entitlement in order to bypass the current regulations. This development is in a very high fire hazard severity zone. The water, firefighting, and infrastructure resources will not support any additional large-scale 5,400-square-foot mega mansions and create an unsolvable burden on our ability to protect the area from fires. Please support the denial. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Russell Hammerl, and I'm, just want to say thank you so much for your dedication- Hi, I'm Russell Hamerle, and I just want to say thank you so much for your dedication to protecting the Santa Monica Mountains. I know that the Board is really dedicated to do that, and it's a resource for the region just as our beaches are. I am a hiker. I've hiked the entire 67 miles of the Backbone Trail. It took me 13 weekends and segments. But this particular segment has a riverine canopy for maybe two miles. It's very thick. It's totally shaded. These are going to back right up against the Backbone Trail. With the damage to the oak trees, there's 120 oak trees on these properties, and we need to protect this. It's going to be an eyesore. The total square footage is 9,000 square feet with basements, guest houses, and garages. It's too big of a footprint. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tina Payne, and I live in Montanito. And this proposed development is on the north-slope mountainside area that is a known nursery to generations of the Santa Monica mountain lions that are now classified as endangered. The caves on this hillside above and just to the west where the female cougars birth and raise their young. Last year, on an adjacent property, an immature lion was tragically deprecated as a result of interactions with a child. Now, as endangered, any new development close to their primary home base must be curtailed. Their ability to successfully birth and raise their young must trump the granting of any variances that allow overdevelopment on this tract. Would it not be short-sighted travesty at this time to allow development that surely will threaten any possible successful efforts to recover an endangered species? Please support the denial of this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Doug Rosen. Is it not important to all municipal and state employees that they work in consort, i.e., one faction spending Herculean efforts to protect endangered wildlife while other entities purposefully allow development that creates known human-threatening opportunities in the exact places that are so close to known lion cub training areas? It is on this exact track of land that mother cats teach their young to hunt rabbits and squirrels and deer. And with your decisions today, maybe even a child, if you allow this, the future probability is that not only may children on these properties be attacked and hurt again, but that the efforts to prevent extinction of the Santa Monica mountain lion's population may also fail. We implore you to scale back this development to protect both future children here and allow the chance of successful restoration of the Santa Monica mountain lion.
Thank you. Thank you. So engaged, I missed that your time was up.
My name is Roger Puyezzi. I am the Vice President of the Los Virginous Homeowners Federation as well as the Chair of the Topanga Association for a Scenic Community. We are also on the side of denying the appeal. We commend regional planning for doing an extensive job in looking at this project, trying to work with the developer, but coming up with zero. We have to understand also that we have the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and we have all of these residents that have come here to deny the appeal, as well as our esteemed Supervisor Lindsey Horvath as well. So, we stand on that side, and hopefully you will all deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no other speakers here. Is there anybody else on the telephone? Okay. Supervisor Horvath, I know you...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reject the implication that was stated here today by a couple of the speakers that the policy, the local coastal plan that the county has developed, was developed to prevent anyone's ability from developing housing. We heard here today from our Director that housing is able to be developed on these parcels. And the intention of developing this local coastal plan is not to prevent the development of housing, it's to protect the safety of this region, especially in the wake of the fire tragedies that we have had in this region. And it's not only county law that has changed, but state law has changed in the wake of these realities. So, I want to be very clear why this plan exists. And so, recognizing that, I just wanted to offer to the appellant, given the testimony here today and the evaluation here, the presentation by our Director, do you have any interest in going back to work on this design? Or would you like to proceed as-is with your proposed development?
Supervisor Horvath, just to answer your question, I appreciate it. We have been working very hard. We've come back with various permutations of a design going back many years. What I apparently didn't make clear enough in my presentation earlier is that there's no redesign possible on these lots because of the H1, okay? So, if you build, like I say, a broom closet, you have to have a fuel mod zone out of that broom closet from the external perimeter 200 feet. There's a Zone A, B, and C. Zone C requires thinning. Zone A requires irrigation. Zone C is thinning.
So, what I hear you saying is that you do not want to propose a new development?
We would love to, but the LCP does not allow that. So, I'm going to have to object to any insinuation that we somehow are lazy or disrespectful.
Those words were not used here today, sir. So, I want to be very...
I heard disrespect.
I just want to ask you a direct question, if you would like to revise this plan or not.
We would love to if the LCP would allow us to, but it doesn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll stop.
Director, do you have any comment, too?
I would like to dispute the assertion that the fuel mod zone cannot be modified. It has been modified in the coastal zone before, and I am confident that economic value to each individual lot can be achieved. These are homes that range from 4,500 feet to 5,400 feet, excuse me, 6,400 feet. So, the average is 5,300 feet of home. There is an ability to construct something larger than a broom closet and smaller than an average of 5,300 square feet. There is an ability to modify the fuel zone with the Fire Department because the Fire Department has done that in order to retain economic use of properties throughout the Santa Monica Mountains. That concludes my statement.
Thank you. And with that, I will remain committed to rejecting the appeal, concurring with the Planning Commission's decision to reject this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it would be appropriate to close this public hearing and vote on this item. Colleagues, item five is now before us. Moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item five is before you, which denies the appeal and upholds the Regional Planning Commission's denial of the project. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, now we're on to item six. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item six is a hearing on project number 2022-004173 to approve the Green Zone technical update, which amends County Code Title 22, Planning and Zoning, to include minor and technical changes to the Green Zone ordinance for clarity and ease of use, to add the Green Zone combining zone and industrial zone parcels subject to the existing Green Zones regulation in the unincorporated communities of West Carson and West Whittier, Los Nietos. No departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
Amy Bodak is still here, and she's still the Director of Regional Planning, and she's still available if we have any questions. Are there any Supervisors? IC Supervisor Mitchell has requested to speak. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Ms. Bodak, you and your team for the work on updating the Green Zone ordinance. I appreciate that. I appreciate the Department of Regional Planning's work to ensure the county's land use and zoning addresses our priority of improving the physical environment for health and wellness of our residents, particularly in communities that have borne the brunt of cumulative environmental hazards and sources of pollution. Over half, six of the 11 of the designated green zones are in the district that I represent. We hear regularly from constituents about health and environmental concerns due to nearby industry-related activities, many of whom would like to learn more about how the Green Zone policy impacts their own neighborhoods. This is also an issue of managing co-priorities since the businesses in these areas provide jobs that contribute to our regional local economy. So, this update provides clarity on the standards for both business owners and residents to understand the expectations of doing business on property located within the Green Zone. So, one question I have for you, Director. Can you share with us how this update and ongoing implementation efforts will be communicated to my constituents, both residents as well as business owners?
Certainly. Chair Han and members of the Board and Supervisor Mitchell, thank you. Ironically, this is not in the Santa Monica Mountains, even though its title is called Green Zones. And there is a reason for that. It is because we are committed to greening industry.
I was about to say, these are communities that need green.
They are, actually. These are environmentally justice-impacted communities. And the Board took action in 2022 to adopt a very progressive Green Zones ordinance to transition legitimate industrial jobs to a more environmentally friendly future. And this is part of your own perspective of trying to change industry over the next 20 years to make it more green. But it is a balance between protecting adjacent residential issues and concerns raised by adjacent residences with protecting jobs. And so, as the Supervisor rightly said, these are necessary jobs and important for our local economy, but they should not come at the impact of the residents who live adjacent to that. We have heard many concerns from residences, and in addition, we will be holding to answer specifically your question, continuous enforcement and education activities over the course of the next five years to seven years to educate those industries that must raise their standards or need to find a different location for their industry. So, some of the things that we're doing to existing industries, which will still be allowed to remain, is encouraging them and working with the DEO, the Department of Economic Opportunity, to find ways to help implement the changes that businesses will need to make as they maybe add additional air filters, maybe as they switch their diesel forklifts to electric vehicle forklifts, and those opportunities. So, it is an education process that is going to be the responsibility of our land use regulations enforcement team. They are the ones that will be actually implementing the Green Zones. We've developed an implementation guide specifically for businesses that we'll be using as that tool that we can reach out to the businesses directly. For residential folks who have a concern about those uses, we will continue to participate in neighborhood meetings around those Green Zones to try to educate them on the types of businesses that will be allowed to remain, the types of businesses that will have to transition in the next five or seven years, and then those businesses that really are not appropriate and once their CUPs have expired, will be looking for new sites.
I appreciate that. Will you be initiating and hosting meetings for residents or just participating in pre-existing meetings? How do you?
It's a combination of both. We tend to not attract people to our meetings, so we prefer to go to pre-existing community meetings that are established. But if there's an interest in each district, we will host our own meetings. One of our map goals for the next year is additional improvements in our community outreach, frankly. It's not just from a language access perspective, but it's about an inclusivity aspect. We need to do outreach that is experiential and so that it's easier and better, frankly, for us to go to the community than it is for the community to come to us. And so, those are things that we're going to be trying to address over the next year. We're pretty confident in our language access. I think we do a pretty good job on that because we do do multiple translations and we have physical and oral translation. But I don't, I think there's always room for improvement on experiential outreach, and that's what we're going to be trying to achieve over the next year. And the Green Zones is one of those areas we're going to be doing it in.
I appreciate that. Couple of quick thoughts, Madam Chair. First of all, for the CEO, as we stand up our new website and communications focused on unincorporated communities, making sure that we're including information about the Green Zones, because it is something I hear about consistently from my district. And just to make sure everybody is front of mind where the Green Zones are. In SD2, it's the communities of East Rancho Dominguez, Florence Firestone, West Athens, Westmont, West Carson, West Rancho Dominguez, Victorian, Willowbrook. In SD1, it's Avocado Heights, East LA, and South San Jose Hills. In SD4, it's Walnut Park and West Whittier, Los Nietos. You know, this is an ongoing challenge. I have the privilege of representing the Board on the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And as we talk about, you know, various just transitions, the ports, rail yards, how we are going to move into the next century, recognizing that there are communities that have been disproportionately harmed by industry of all sizes, and how we create that balance. As we've talked about oil drilling in the county, we have talked about a just transition for those industries. And again, I appreciate you saying, not on the backs of compromising the health of people who have lived and continue to thrive in those neighborhoods. So, thank you very much. We will continue to partner with your department. I appreciate your department coming to meetings that we have called. And so, perhaps us working together, we can continue to get the, not get the attention of the residents. They know it and are organizing, you know, across this county in a powerful way around finding their own agency around environmental justice issues. And so, making sure that they know that we're a partner, particularly making sure that they understand the role of Green Zones and help us get there quicker.
Well, I do appreciate that. You know, these neighborhoods are important to me. I come from an industrial city as well, so I understand the struggles that are occurring. And so, I do agree that we have to look at each and every individual project and balance the needs of the residents as well as the workforce that's going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Right, because we can have clean air and good jobs. We don't have to sacrifice one for the other, but we have to make sure that there is a balance there for the jobs in these industries as well as protecting the air for those who have suffered as a result of some of these major industries in our area. Ms. Bodak, I see that we're approving technical updates to the Green Zone, and we're also adding, I see in my district, a couple of parcels in West Whittier, Los Nietos, to areas that would be requiring a CUP for adding drive-throughs and service stations. Is that correct? And I was also reading that the drive-through and service stations, which were omitted in error. Can you elaborate a little on what I just brought up?
Certainly, Chair. We did have a motion by District 1, maybe a year or so ago, that asked us to include Green Zones in, excuse me, to include drive-throughs as a use that would require a CUP because of the potential nuisance impacts that they would have on adjacent residential uses with idling cars and traffic and pedestrian conflicts. So, that was inadvertently left out of a different plan that we brought forward. So, we committed that we would put it in this Green Zone. So we committed that we would put it in this green zones ordinance to correct that omission.
And so is that the reason there's adding some parcels in Los Nietos?
Yes, that is correct.
And again, I was listening very intently to Supervisor Mitchell talking about the outreach, you know, the engagement, since this is kind of a new direction, a good direction, a right direction, but new, and just very interested and maybe look forward to you working with my office, particularly as we reach out to these new...
We did have a lot of outreach prior to the adoption of the green zones, but when it went into place...
But now you're adding...
Now we're doing implementation and adding...
Right, so, well, somebody might not have paid attention...
Yes.
...if their parcel was not a part of it.
Right.
So adding parcels is, I kind of am thinking, is a little bit a different application.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's see. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no members of the public in person that have signed up for this item.
Is there anybody on the phone?
Yes. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
Let me guess who?
Our first participant is Genevieve Claveriol. You may begin.
Hi, Genevieve.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Yep. I'm glad. Anyway, I am very glad to see you review some of those issues that come up, because I think some are outdated, and we need to maybe review them in a more open manner, because I think a lot are old-fashioned and not looking at what's already going on now, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, are you done, Genevieve? Is she done? Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for this, Supervisors. And, you know, I think that we've made a teeny bit of progress by having these meetings, you know, the public hearing where there actually are some issues that are worked out on the Tuesday. But I do still think it's best to meet every Tuesday and, you know, take public comment every Tuesday, because you learn a lot. You learn a lot about the green zone, you learn a lot about the blue zone, and you learn a lot about the red zone in Studio City, which is where Harvard Westlake is planning to take over.
Ooh, I saw you trying to transition. This is not a just transition.
I'm a transitioner. I'm transitioning, that's correct.
You gotta stay on item six.
I am transitioning, Supervisor. Please don't interrupt. That's very rude. We have to be respectful here.
Stay on the side.
Thank you. I have, yeah, all right, I will defer now, because I know that by being respectful and kind, you're going to get the Supervisor to stand up and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Julip Thorben. You may begin.
Hi, uh, can you...
Yes, go ahead.
I actually think I'm in the wrong place in the queue.
Okay.
I'm not speaking on item...
You're not on item six? Are you, okay. Maybe public comment, so you'll come back. Okay, next speaker on item six.
Madam Chair, there's no other speakers in the queue.
Okay, and seeing no other Supervisors wanting to comment, it would be appropriate to close the public item and vote on this item. Item six is now before us, moved by Supervisor Mitchell. I'll second it to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item six is before you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we're now going on to specials, since by understanding Supervisor Barker, you have an urgency motion.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I have before you today an urgency motion, and I hope to have your support. On Saturday, September 16th, 2023, at approximately 5:57 P.M., Los Angeles County Sheriff's Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer was shot in his patrol vehicle at the intersection of Sierra Highway and East Avenue Q while on duty. Deputy Klinkenbumer was found by a Good Samaritan who alerted the Palmdale Sheriff's Station. Deputy Klinkenbumer was taken to Antelope Valley Medical Center in grave condition, later pronounced dead. Deputy Klinkenbumer, a third-generation law enforcement officer, survived by his fiance, mother, father, grandparents, and the men and women of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I truly am heartbroken, and the loss of Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer has unleashed shock, anger, and grief throughout the community. It is unimaginable to begin to understand the emotions his loved ones and colleagues are feeling at this moment, and they do deserve answers. The Sheriff's Department investigators are actively working on the case and have obtained a person of interest that committed this heinous act. I'm introducing a reward today to encourage members of the public to contact investigators with any kind, any and all information that will bring swift justice to this case. The motion directive reads as follows. I therefore move that the Board of Supervisors find pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2 that there is a need to take immediate action, and the need to take this action came to the attention of the Board of Supervisors subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's board meeting, and offer reward that effective September 17th, 2023, in the amount of $100,000 in exchange for information leading to the apprehension and conviction of the perpetrator or perpetrators responsible for this heinous murder of Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer. Thank you, colleagues, for your consideration and support of this urgency motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Barker. It certainly was an incident that shocked all of us, and our thoughts and certainly our prayers are with the family. It was a multi-generational family that gave their service to our L.A. County Sheriff's Department. So Supervisor Barker, we're going to vote on the need to place this motion on today's agenda, and then we'll vote on the reward motion after public comment. So this urgency finding is now before us, moved by Supervisor Barker. I'll second it. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
The urgency directive is before you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we will now hear from members of the public wishing to address the Board on general public comment or on this reward motion. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on these items. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item, these items.
With the following individuals, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Francisco Guerrero, Carrie Horton, Joaquin Baltrán, Carolina Montes, Michael Valentine, Melody Mora, Angelica Francisco, Iris Martinez, Gabriela Orona, Miriam Zamora, Claudia Moreno, Pilar Castillon, Araceli Sanchez, Caesar Benitez, Angelique Johnson, Brian Thomas, Michael Pinkton, Eric Sherman, and Sarah Gleiser, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
First participant is Genevieve Claveriol. You may begin.
Well, I am totally in support of what Supervisor Barker is doing in that issue. It's almost unbelievable that human beings can do those kind of actions, and it's becoming worse and worse. And some steps got to be taken, because it's totally unacceptable. I am sure people who knew the person who killed that sheriff knew all along how damaged he was. And instead of, you know, giving support, remain silent. I am just appalled with this kind of behavior, and it's happening more and more every day in our city around in the U.S. We need to improve the way we deal with the safety of the individual. And I think when you know an individual is sick and needs help, you need to report it. That's the only thing to do.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Bye.
Our next participant is Heather Detwiler. You may begin.
My name is Heather Detwiler from Sherman Oaks. I am here today to again urge you to bring back mask requirements in healthcare settings. Another week has gone by where nothing has been done, and people are sick, disabled, or dead because of it. Getting COVID leaves you at great risk to horrible problems after the acute infection. Chances of getting long COVID are at least one in five infections, and increases with each new infection. Long COVID includes strokes, heart attacks, diabetes, severe neurological problems, full-on disability, and death. Vaccines do not stop long COVID and organ damage, and there are currently no treatments for long COVID. Doctors should not be spreading a Level III biohazard pathogen to patients. What happened to do no harm? Most people won't do the right thing if there's no mandate. Yesterday, I called 13 orthodontic offices, and most said they aren't masking because they don't have to anymore. There's still sanitizing surfaces in between patients, but that doesn't help when it comes to an airborne pathogen. It's unconscionable that masks were removed just as cases started surging in L.A. and haven't been brought back. Please do the right thing and bring back masks in healthcare.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Paul Hennessy. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Paul Hennessy. I'm here again to, it's the Board to bring back masks in healthcare settings. Healthcare workers overwhelmingly support masks to protect themselves and patients. Patients deserve protection from all airborne illnesses, and not requiring masks will put them in harm's way. Two-way masking is much more effective than putting the burden on the most vulnerable to mask. Vaccines alone are only one layer of protection. We must go further. But simply recommending masks will not help, as there are people who don't understand how airborne transmission works and don't care about anyone but themselves. Masks must be required. Burn strains of COVID are the most transmissible yet. There are countless COVID outbreaks tied to hospitals. Masks belong in healthcare the same way that hand washing and gloves do. Reinstate the mask mandate in healthcare settings. It will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Elizabeth Z. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yes, hi. I'm calling on you to reinstate the universal mask requirement in healthcare. I am immunocompromised, and, you know, immunocompromised people can choose to avoid many places, but we cannot choose to avoid healthcare, and it's currently a very, very high-risk place for people to go. There's ample evidence that two-way masking is much more effective than one-way masking. I know many people who have recently gotten COVID in healthcare settings, and I have been avoiding healthcare because I can't afford to get COVID, and it's, and the healthcare settings just are not safe right now without mask requirements in place. We are, things are surging, and we also do not have the tools. People are, have that waning immunity right now. It's very hard to get the new booster, like, a lot of people are not sufficiently boosted, and there's less publicly available data now in L.A. than ever before, making it impossible for the public to assess risk. Bring back masking.
Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Greta Hasakis. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Greta Hasakis. I'm from the city of Torrance. This is a moment that requires courage. Our summer wave of COVID infections has just kept increasing, week over week this summer. Now the summer wave will go directly into the winter wave that is coming. In New York State, the test positivity rate per Walgreens is 62.7%, a staggering number, the highest ever recorded by Walgreens since they began testing over two years ago. The New York infection rate is the early warning system for California, and it doesn't look good. If masks are not reinstated in healthcare, our already high COVID numbers will get higher. What will happen when L.A. General and Harvard UCLA hospitals are full and the staff is out sick? Please work with the Health Department to reinstate masks in healthcare settings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. You may begin.
Thank you. This is the general public comment, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. So then, thank you. So my general public comment is I just want to applaud the Board for leaning in and listening and trying to be respectful of the communities. And, you know, I love that we're starting these meetings with the acknowledgement, which is kind of a wide net that explains, you know, how it is important to remember what we're doing and what we've done in the past. And as we look forward along the L.A. County Flood District, we just have questions about whether or not we should be disrupting a neighborhood. You know, the reason is very simple. It's very, very simple. Money, money. But it's not really money that would allow a $42 million investment by a billionaire to turn into a $100 million, you know, project that puts a large building in our quiet, peaceful place with little creatures, beautiful little creatures and birds and neighbors walking around and being, playing golf a little bit and tennis and enjoying this space as it is, not looking forward to bulldozers and an exclusionary feeling.
Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please. We're going to the hall. Go right ahead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Tiffany, and I am a street vendor organizer with Community Power Collective. Most of the vendors here today come from the special vending district in East Los Angeles, District One, and we would like to provide general public comment on item one on today's agenda. We understand that this item is being continued at a later date, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue working with the county on the amended health ordinance. Vendors want to obtain a county health permit to formalize their businesses, but due to limited income, they cannot afford to pay the high permit fees that are proposed by the Department of Public Health. I understand that the Health Department needs to recover costs to operate the program, and for that reason, we urge the county leaders to identify sustainable funding to help vendors like them pay for this permit. We continue to affirm their desire to fully formalize their small businesses, but we need your support to make this a reality. Additionally, we urge leadership to help us identify free-to-low-cost commissaries and kitchens that we can...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, Junta Directiva. Es un placer estar aquí. Me llamo Gabriela Orona.
Good morning to the Board. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Gabriela Orona.
Soy vendedor ambulante del este de Los Ángeles, Distrito Uno, en Los Postres.
I am a street vendor, Los Angeles District, District One, and I sell desserts.
Soy viuda, tengo necesidades especiales, así como un hijo de 17 años también.
I am a widow, and I have special needs, including a 17-year-old son.
A mí me afecta la inflación, ya que está muy elevada.
The cost of the permit affects me because it's a very elevated cost.
Así como los precios, así como los costos de los permisos y carritos.
The cost of the permits, as well as the cost of the carts, also affect me.
Les pido de todo corazón que tomen en cuenta nuestras necesidades.
I ask you with all my heart that you would take into account our needs.
Y que piensen en cada uno de nosotros, ya que tenemos que trabajar para llevar sustento a nuestros hogares.
And that you think about each one of us, since we all have to work to be able to bring nourishment to our homes.
Muchas gracias por escucharnos, y es un placer estar aquí. Gracias.
Thank you so much for listening to us. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I am Carrie Horton, and I would like to speak about Airbnb and the new regulations. My family of four bought a fixer-upper in Topanga 20 years ago. I am a stay-at-home mom, and my husband works as a sound editor in the film industry. He has had no work for four months because of the writers' strike. Airbnb has kept us in our home. My father is 86, and my mom is 82, and they have a home they bought in 1965, and they have a home but not money. Airbnb gives them social connection and funding to keep them in their home. Airbnb guests visit us from all over the city and enjoy Topanga's beauty on a weekend or a few days. We have met people from all walks of life, of all income levels, from all over our city. Please continue allowing Airbnb for families and our elderly. Please consider regulating the Airbnb bad actors, and please help to write the new Airbnb regulations in a reasonable and fair way.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias a la Junta Directiva. Mi nombre es Carolina Montes. Vengo del...
Vengo del Distrito Uno.
Good morning to the board. My name is Carolina Montes, and I come from District One.
Agradezco la oportunidad. Me gusta
I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Me gustaría, agradecemos la oportunidad de seguir, de, de que sigan trabajando con el condado.
I would like to, we would continue to, to thank you guys for the opportunity to continue working with the county.
Modificando los permisos y los carritos.
Modifying the permits and modifying the carts?
Me gustaría que, que modificaran los precios.
I would like for the prices to be modified.
Están muy altos.
They are very high.
Ya que soy la, soy madre para, el único sustento para mis hijos.
I'm a mother, and I'm the only one who is sustaining my children.
No pedimos nada gratis.
We're not asking for anything free.
Pero nos gustaría que modificaran los precios.
But we would like, we would like for you to modify the price of the permits.
Nos gustaría tener permisos y, y ten, y
We'd like to have permits and
Y tener nuestro, nuestro propio negocio.
And to be able to have our own business.
Nos gustaría pagar taxes. Pago taxes, pero me gustaría pagarlos ya con un permiso.
So, we like to be able to pay taxes. I do pay taxes, but I want to be able to do that with a permit legally. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Good morning, Board. My name is Melody Mora. I am 20 years old, and I am a street vendor in East LA. I would like to provide general public comment on item number one on today's agenda. My mom and I are both street vendors. At the moment, it's our only source of income. With this, I also save up for my college funds. We understand that this item is being continued at a later date. We appreciate the opportunity to continue working with the county on the amended health ordinance. I want to obtain a county health permit to formalize my business, but due to my limited income, I cannot afford to pay the high permit fees that are proposed by the Department of Public Health. I understand that the Health Department needs to recover costs to operate the program, and for that reason, we urge county leaders to identify sustainable funding to help vendors like me pay for these permits. We continue to affirm our desire to fully formalize our small businesses and need your support to make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, Supervisors.
Buenos dias.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Mi nombre es Claudia Moreno.
My name is Claudia Moreno.
Y soy una vendedora de Rancho Dominguez.
And I am a vendor from Rancho Dominguez.
También organizo en el área.
I also organize in the area.
Muchos de nosotros, los vendedores, tenemos necesidades.
A lot of us vendors, we have needs.
Pero queremos legalizarnos.
But we want to legalize ourselves.
Por eso pedimos de su liderazgo para que nos ayuden con los permisos de salubridad.
That's why we're asking for your leadership to be able to help us with the health permits.
Ya que para nosotros es importante legalizarnos.
Since it is important for us to legalize ourselves.
Y no nos sigan enforzando.
And for that to be able to, be able to continue to be enforced.
Por eso necesitamos que nos ayuden con, a comisarías a bajo costo.
We ask you for, for that reason, to help us with commissaries that would be low-cost
Carritos accesibles.
Also accessible carts.
También necesitamos que nos ayuden y aprueben leyes para poder cocinar en casa.
We also need you to approve laws for us to be able to cook in our homes.
Ya que esto nos daría un alivio financiero porque tenemos muchas necesidades.
This would give us a financial relief, because we have a lot of needs.
Para nuestra familia, ya que somos sostenes.
For our families, since we are the ones who are sustaining them.
Y nuestra familia depende de nosotros, de lo que vendemos en las calles.
And our family depends on us and what we sell on the streets.
Por eso les pedimos que trabajen conjuntamente, y estamos agradecidos.
So, because of that, we ask you to work together with us, and we are grateful.
Por trabajar con nosotros y hacer que nuestra venta ambulante se legalice.
Thank you for working with us and for helping our street vendorship be able to become legalized.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Brian Thomas, and I'm here for two distinct issues. One involves the Metro Transit Authority. I was assaulted on one of your buses, but that's not the gist of what I'm here for. Subsequently, the operator of the bus took possessions of mine, to which I've been unable to recover. I've been took down to the Metro Tower several occasions, and there's nothing being done on that. And I would kind of like something be done in my favor. This happened on July the 3rd, and it's been quite a while. The second issue is, involves me being at the Almonte Department of Public Social Services, where I had an extensive injury to my right ankle, and I asked a deputy to call 911 for me, and he outright refused. This happened on 9/3/2021, and eventually, I was left there after the building had closed. And eventually, Almonte Police Department came and rescued me from there. And I'd like something be done about that. I followed
Sir, where do you live?
I say 4026
Do you know which supervisor is your supervisor?
Excuse me?
Do you know which one of us represents you?
No, I do not. This is my first time entering after reading so much.
Where do you, so finish where you, where do you live?
4026 West Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 9008.
That's, Ms. Mitchell is your, you're so lucky to have Supervisor Mitchell. She is going to have her staff reach out to you and see if, if we can help you with the two issues that you came for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Sarasely Sanchez.
Buenos dias.
Good morning. My name is Sarasely Sanchez.
Pertenesco al Distrito Número Uno. Soy vendedor ambulante del este de Los Ángeles.
I belong to District One, and I am a street vendor from East Los Angeles.
Soy adama de casa. Tengo hijos que sacar adelante.
I am a homemaker, and I have children that I need to help move forward.
Mi preocupación es el alto costo de los permisos.
And my worry is the high cost of the permits.
Son muy altos para mí, y para mi necesidad es trabajar y obtener un permiso.
They're very high for me and for my need. My need is to work and to be able to obtain a permit.
Para poder trabajar y salir adelante es sacar sobre a mi familia adelante.
To be able to work and to be able to help move myself and my family forward.
Por eso pido a ustedes que sean flexibles en los costos de permisos de vendedor ambulante.
So, because of that, I ask you to be flexible in regard to the cost of the permits for street vendors.
Para poder obtener uno y trabajar bien sin inconvenientes de tener una multa a los vendedores ambulantes.
To be able to work and to be able to do so in a free manner without having obstacles and without having to pay fines.
Agradezco su atención a nosotros, y esperemos ayuda de ustedes. Gracias.
I'm grateful for your attention to us, and I am hopeful for your help. Thank you.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm here to talk about the short-term rental ordinance. My name is Samantha Jacober, and I'm a writer and director living in Topanga. I was a renter my entire adult life until last year, when I was able to purchase my first home because it had a legal structure on the property that I could use as a short-term rental. I used the space as a part-time office, family visits, and for short-term rentals, and I wouldn't be able to be a homeowner without that short-term rental income. I am not a bad actor. I'm always on-site. I educate my guests on fire safety, no loud parties, responsible parking. I pay my taxes. I have a seven-year-old in Topanga Elementary, and I am very involved in my community. So, I'm asking the board to please draw a distinction. There are absentee speculators and investors who take advantage of the system, and there are law-abiding homeowners like me. The artists, the gig workers, the writers, the actors, the environmentalists, the musicians, the retirees, all trying to get a foothold or just hold on in this unbelievably expensive state. I'm asking you to please not knock the knees out from young families, new homeowners, and the elderly in our communities with this ordinance as written.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, estimados miembros de la Junta Directiva.
Good morning, honored members of the board.
Mi nombre es Iris Martinez, y pertenezco al grupo de vendedores del este de Los Ángeles.
My name is Iris Martinez, and I belong to the Street Vendors Group from East Los Angeles.
Me gustaría hacer un comentario general sobre el punto número uno.
And I'd like to make a general public comment about item number one.
Yo quiero y deseo que se nos dé la oportunidad de obtener permiso de salubridad.
I want and desire for you to give us the opportunity to be able to obtain a health permit.
Para así poder formalizar mi pequeño negocio.
And in that manner, to be able to formalize my small business.
Ya que este es el que brinda el sustento para darle a mis cuatro hijos lo necesario, y así tengan un mejor futuro.
And that is the way that I provide income and support my four children, to be able to provide them with the necessary things and a better future.
Por lo tanto, Junta de Supervisores.
Therefore, Board of Supervisors.
Les hago un llamado para que tomen liderazgo, para que apoyen nuestras propuestas de bajo costo de permiso de salubridad.
I make, I make a call for you to be able to assume leadership, to be able to support our proposals for low-cost permits, health permits.
Solo somos personas que trabajamos arduamente.
We are just people who work in a very arduous way.
Para salir adelante, pero lo queremos hacer conforme a la ley.
And we do that to be able to move forward, but we want to do that according to the law.
Gracias y buen día.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Angelique Johnson. I, I'm in Holly Mitchell's district, but my most complaint is with Janice Hahn. In the great and powerful words of Fannie Lou Hamer, "I am sick and tired of being sick and tired of the Los Angeles County Supervisor's Park and Rec Department, and most of all, the County Golf Department." I am filing for a full report investigation on the hiring practices of the L.A. County Golf Department, as well as the Park and Rec Department in general. I have worked in this community for over 30 years. I filed a disagreement with American Golf. I sued them. They had to settle with me, and I am tired. I've given my life to this community for half of my life, over 30 years, and I'm tired of the corruption and cronyism between American Golf and L.A. County, because the county is here to protect the people, and they're raising all the prices because it's colluded, and it's, it just incestuous, what it is.
Thank you.
And it's a downright shame.
Thank you.
And I want to talk to both of you ladies.
Thank you, okay.
No, no, I don't want to hear no deputies
All right, thank you.
Or none of that.
Next speaker, please.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Cesar Benitez. Soy un vendedor de ambulante del este de Los Ángeles, Whittier Boulevard.
A warm good morning to each of you. I am from District One. My name is Cesar Benitez, and I am a street vendor from East Los Angeles, Whittier Boulevard.
Soy una persona de la tercera edad.
I am a senior citizen.
Quiero hacer un comentario al punto número uno del día de hoy.
And I want to make a comment with respect to item number one from today's agenda.
Ya sé que este punto se discutirá posteriormente.
I know that this item will be discussed as it has been continued.
Yo pertenezco a un grupo de vendedores que nos organizamos.
I belong to a group of street vendors, and we have organized.
Y estamos trabajando para legalizar nuestros negocios.
And we are working to be able to legalize our businesses.
Pero el camino es muy largo y con muchos obstáculos.
But it's a very long road with lots of obstacles.
Ustedes tienen el poder de hacer más fácil este camino.
You have the power to make this road an easier one.
Por eso les pido que nos ayuden a encontrar fondos para las licencias y permisos.
So, because of that, I ask you to help us to find the funds for licenses and permits.
De bajo costo y que adopten el programa MECO.
That it would be low-cost, and that you would adopt the MECO program.
Que nos ayudaría a que los costos no se incrementaran como lo están el día de hoy.
That would help us so that the costs do not increase as they are today.
Quiero que consideren que somos una microempresa.
And want you to consider that we are a microenterprise.
Nosotros queremos ser parte de la solución y no del problema.
We want to be part of the solution, not the problem.
Nosotros lo que queremos es seguir apoyando la economía y no ser parte de carga política o económica para ustedes.
What we want is to continue supporting the economy and not be part of a burden, whether it be economical or societal for you guys.
Thank you. Gracias.
Gracias a ustedes.
Thank you to each of you.
Next speaker, please.
Hola, buenos dias, Mesa Directiva. Mi nombre es
Good morning.
Angelita Francisco.
Good morning. My name is Angelita Francisco. Good morning to the Board of Directors.
Agradezco el tiempo que nos dan como vendedores.
I'm grateful for the time that you give us as vendors.
Yo formo parte de los, de los vendedores del este de Los Ángeles.
I'm part of the vendors of East Los Angeles.
Y como comentabas, bueno, yo soy madre soltera, y
And also, as was mentioned, I am a single mother.
Y sostiene mi familia, el, en el cual nosotros como vendedores nos organizamos.
And I'm the one sustaining my family, and as vendors, we're organizing ourselves.
Y queremos contribuir con, con el estado, verá, en las formas y las reglas que nos piden.
We want to be able to contribute to the, to the state in the manner and the ways that they ask of us.
Pero debido a los precios y a las multas que a veces nos dan, se nos hacen imposibles.
But because of the prices and the fines that they sometimes give us, it seems impossible to us.
Por eso agradecemos el apoyo que nos dan.
Because of that, we thank you for the support that you give us.
Y corroboro con, con la accesibilidad a los precios para que nosotros podamos contribuir al estado y con ustedes.
And I am in agreement that you would provide accessible prices so we can contribute to the state and, and you guys.
Queremos legalizar nuestros negocios, verdad, y, y cumplir con los reglamentos, y, y estamos dispuestos como vendedores, verdad, lo hablamos, lo hablo en general porque queremos este, no ser carga de este país.
We want to be able to comply with the law and contribute as vendors, and we don't want to have to leave this country.
Gracias por el tiempo que nos dan.
Thank you so much for the time that you give us.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Michael Joseph Pittkin. I am a new citizen of Santa Monica, California. I am HIV-positive, 20 years, over half in L.A. County. I have been through every HIV program and agency in L.A. County. I have seniority. In Santa Monica, I was told to my face, the beach area is the golden area. I have to be unhoused there for five years before I will receive help. I was applied and was denied from all help when I did LOSAHS H-MIS Coordinated Entry System, CES. I should be receiving the same care in Santa Monica as I receive in Skid Row. Today, this is this body's notice. Cease and desist this unequal discrimination and reverse discrimination in the West L.A. and beach cities. Follow the grant monies, all going to Skid Row. Every area and every city needs its own shelter availability, and come into compliance with federal law of Martin versus Boise. Unhoused and disabled, being shipped to other cities.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you for speaking to us. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Buenos dias a todos los Supervisores del Condado de Los Ángeles.
Good morning to all of the Supervisors from the County of Los Angeles.
Mi nombre es Pilar Castillon.
My name is Pilar Castillon.
Vivo, vivo en el, en el, en el Distrito Número Uno, y, y estoy orgullosa de pertenecer a él.
I live in District One, and I'm proud of belonging to that district.
Estoy aquí para pedir que como vendedores
I'm here to ask that as vendors
tengamos accesibilidad a los permisos a bajo costo.
That we would have accessibility to low-cost permits.
Ya que cada uno de nosotros por años hemos estado pagando nuestros impuestos correspondientes.
Since for years, each one of us has been paying our corresponding taxes.
Por lo tanto, no somos una carga para el gobierno ni para nadie.
Because of this, we are not a burden to the government or to anyone.
Estoy aquí para pedir una acción razonable para cada uno de nosotros.
I'm here to ask for reasonable action for each one of us.
La venta es mi único sustento económico.
My selling is my only means of economic income.
Soy una persona de la tercera edad y pedimos ayuda para más educación.
I am a senior citizen, and we ask for your help for more education.
Y financiamiento y acceso.
And financing and access.
A carritos, becas y cocinas permitidas.
To carts, to scholarships, and also to permitted kitchens.
Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Joaquin Beltran. I'm from the city of Downey. I'm with ActionCareEquity.org. I'm here to demand on behalf of our community, who has sent over 13,000 letters and made over 1,000 calls to your offices, that L.A. County reinstate the mask requirement in healthcare settings. Last month, we had on average one death daily. Now it's four deaths daily. A 4x increase means 30 L.A. residents were dying monthly, and now it's 120 who are dying monthly. And we haven't even reached peak deaths, and many more are getting long COVID. How can hospitalizations only double over the last month while deaths increased by four times? We are under testing, which means we have higher cases, higher hospitalizations, higher deaths than are being reported. By definition, everyone in the hospital is vulnerable, needs clean indoor air so that they can get better, not get sick from a preventable, disabling, deadly disease. Why should the residents of L.A. County, like my grandma, be susceptible to healthcare-acquired infections? Because of policy negligence. Be a leader. Bring back mask requirements in healthcare settings. Lives are on the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Muy buenos días, querido comité de supervisores.
A very warm good morning to the Supervisors Committee.
Mi nombre es Miriam Samora.
My name is Miriam Samora.
Soy vendedora ambulante del distrito uno en el este de Los Ángeles.
I am a street vendor from District One in East Los Angeles.
Estamos aquí para que ustedes nos den su apoyo.
We're here for you to give us your support.
Ya que mis compañeros han estado hablando sobre MECO, sobre las becas y sobre carritos y sobre...
And...
otras cosas necesarias para nosotros.
My colleagues have been speaking about MECO and also the carts and scholarships and other necessary things that we need.
En el día de hoy, yo les quiero pedir que nos apoyen en las cocinas compartidas.
Today, I want to ask for your support with regards to the shared kitchens.
Ya que sabemos que en nuestra comunidad las iglesias, escuelas y centros comunitarios las tienen.
Since we know that in our communities, we have churches and schools and community centers that have those.
Pero aún no nos han dado la oportunidad a nosotros para poder usarlas.
But they still haven't given us the opportunity to be able to use them.
Es por eso que estoy aquí con ustedes para que ustedes nos den algo para que ellos puedan ayudarnos a obtener esa cocina.
So that's why I'm here with you, so that you guys can do something so that they would be able to give us that permission to use those kitchens.
Ya que los carritos están a costo muy alto y también los permisos.
Since the carts are at a very high price and also the permits.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sharina Jones, and I'm here to talk to someone about helping me get my kids back from CPS. They were illegally taken from me. And I've tried to talk to the Obusman. I've tried to talk to everybody, and nobody is helping me, and I really need help.
Okay. Back there, there's a person waving at you. It says constituent assistance. Let's try one more time to see if we can help.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers on the queue? Supervisor Barker, I see you...
Yeah, Madam Chair, you know, the issue that's being before us to be continued to December on the ordinance regarding the outdoor vending. You know, for me in my district, I can only speak for my district. One of the issues that is problematic, that's not going to be covered under this, is the big vendor who is not allowed to be permitted under his new state law. And the Department of Economic Opportunity has continued to promise us they're going to bring forward a ordinance in conjunction with the Department of Public Health. I was told October, and now I'm being told December. So I'm going to ask CEO. I'm a little frustrated that now it's December because we've been discussing this. It's been on the agenda beginning in May, and now we're continuing it to December 12th. And my understanding it is in order to allow the Department of Economic Opportunity to bring in an ordinance in conjunction with. I was told October, which is why I got thrown off by this date in December because now we're moving it to December. And I have constituents, quite frankly, that are being impacted in Altadena that have expressed concern. And again, it's not over the people that are here today. It's over the... What they call the outdoor vendors that bring in basically a kitchen and set up on the sidewalk. And to date, we have nothing on the books as it relates to enforcement, at least enforcement.
I know. This is not on the agenda today.
No, I understand. So I'm asking for a report back because I'm going to refuse to vote to continue to December when, on this item, when in fact I've been told that the Department of Economic Opportunity is going to have it before us in October. Yeah, it says continue to December 12th, 2023.
Right. I don't think...
And that date concerns me because I'm being told October is...
But I don't think we're voting on continuing it.
Yeah, we are. It says right here.
We already voted.
No...
We already voted.
Okay, well, then I would like to have my vote reconsidered, and I will vote no on continuing it to December. I thought that was part of what we're going to vote on right now.
We voted earlier.
Okay. Then I would ask, since I voted in favor, I can ask for reconsideration. I want to be reflected as voting no based on the fact that we continue to be promised October, and so I'm going to vote no.
Do we need to... County Council? She can just...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Like that as a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you still want your report back? Bring the report back?
Yes.
All right. You got that.
Oh, and when is the report coming back?
Whenever Fizia can figure out when she can get it. I mean, I'm just incredibly... I'm incredibly frustrated.
Okay, but you would like that report back before we hear this again on December 12th.
Yes.
Got that?
Although I bet it'll be continued again. Yes.
Okay.
I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our time for public comment. But Supervisor Barker's read-in motion about the reward is now before us. Moved by Supervisor Barker. I will second it. To approve the item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
The reward motion is before you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, that concludes today's meeting, and the next regular meeting of this board will be held on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. Thank you again to all who took the time to come down and speak to us this morning. Have a good rest of your day.